With my computer lately and it's gone through IT work. Um, okay, so our next one is Zero West Brew Street. Um, it is, that's Angel Park. It's one of our town parks. It is surrounded by low density residential and high density. And it was donated to us by the Wingate family. That's really, it was, it states in that agreement should be used for a park and not residential. So that's kind of actually, this was one of also the plots or parcels of land that started this whole process as well.
And then Wingate's gave property across the road to town too, right?
Correct. Yes, that was the Wingate subdivision we just did. Um, and I actually just had Lori come by the other day to finalize signing that flat.
Great.
So that's the Spruce Street one?
Yes.
Okay. So the Pine Street one was the one that we looked at before, uh, that that was brought to us earlier, correct?
Uh, no, it was, uh, it was technically, it's, um.
The, the one that sort of right off of.
Aren't they adjacent?
And yeah, I'm like, I'm trying to look at this now.
It's called Tilden Park.
Tilden Park. That was the one we were looking at.
Well, I think they're adjacent to each other.
Technically, yeah, they are.
It's really one's parcel.
Well, that's the next ones on our list. Yes. Uh, community park. Um, let's see. The grantor and grantee and the covenant agreed that the property shall be used for a public spa- park and open spaces such as public improvements. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that's really all you need to know about that. Um, there is water and sewer infrastructure present on Peak to Peak Highway. Um, and near the northeast corner of that parcel. Let's see here, we have. Next, Zero Peak to Peak Highway. This is.
Move on. It sounds like Zero Pine Street is, is clearly a no-go.
It's a no-go.
Yeah, the covenants are pretty tight.
They are. Yep.
Just cross them out.
Yeah, maybe we can eliminate some of these ones that are, are not even a possibility based on, on the covenant that was reached with them.
Yeah, that's kind of what.
Let Brett do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that is, so Andrew and John and I have gotten to the, we've eliminated all town parks. Um, and any that have water infrastructure, like the, any of the, those on them. Um, and so we're still in the process of kind of finalizing all that before we bring it to the board. That was direct, the direction the board gave us. So that's been done. It was just, uh, Jim, uh, Vice Chair Reese had asked that we bring this forward to the planning commission and I just wanted you guys to have it. And if you had any ideas or anything as well, or any of this, uh, historical knowledge. That it was really what, kind of what I was looking for here. But yeah, so now we're on to Zero Peak to Peak Highway. This is known as Moose Meadows, um, Town Pocket, or Town Pocket Park. It's really surrounded by forest and town roadway. This was also part of that Mud Lake, um, acquisition, um, and annexation. There is conservation easements all over the portions of town-owned property to be designated as open space. Um, the easement prohibit any construction of buildings, the commercial harvesting of timber, or the expansions of roads throughout the air, the area. Yeah, so.
That's a no.
That's a big no.
Zero Peak to Peak?
Yeah, it's a weird funky parcel. And there's also the Indian Peak subdivision that states only single family dwelling units, attached guest house, a garage and a garden storage. Any businesses, commercial enterprise, or other non-residential uses were subject to licensing and approval by the town of Netherland and it must be connected to water and sewer was part of that agreement.
When I looked at that, it didn't look like 31 acres to me, but.
That's what property search says.
Just looking at the, the map, the, the street view map. Does that look, or am I thinking?
It's, yeah, it's three parcels. So one parcel's 21.27, one's 9.69, and one is .51. Yep. So there's three different parcels that make up Zero Peak to Peak here.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And they're all part.
Total is 31.
Yes, sir.
So Zero Peak to Peak too?
Yes.
That other, okay, well, they're all part of the Mud Lake.
Correct.
I can sit down with you.
Which is why it was kind of group does that one.
Go through there. Yep. So it's, it's definitely. It's all part of that Mud Lake agreement.
Yep.
And so, you know, when you read it, so when you see it, then, uh, Brett, then it's, so the 18 homes was, so out of that whole 300 acres, everybody had responsibility. There's Ridge Road. It was all part of it, but then it was 18 homes and that's that Indian Peak subdivision.
Yep. And the single family dwelling units. Yep. Yeah, that makes more sense now to me. Now it clicked. Our next parcel, uh, we mentioned four, 11 Navajo Trail. It's a flat, long, narrow parcel. It currently has, uh, utilities easement on it for the town. Um, other than that, just a flat piece of land by residential. Um, there's no agreements that have been found on it. Just recording agreements. That's about it, but that's, yeah, nothing else on it. So technically something could be done there, maybe.
It's tiny.
It's tiny. Yeah, it's, it's tiny.
Well, yeah, and it's, it's basically part of the Mud Lake. So it, it was, um, I'm very familiar with it. It's, it's basically was created because to try to make the 18 homes and to do that circular idea. So it just became a natural to make that open space there. So it's, and it was actually probably was, I think was given a name, but yes, so it's just basically that town park for that area. The exact same with the spacer between the subdivision and the school just was all, so really it is maybe not called a park. It really is open space. It was so basically in the Mud Lake agreement, it was basically property that, you know, wasn't appropriate for development.
So Brett, I apologize. I should have been a little more specific when I asked for this because anything that is point two one acres is not viable.
Yeah, so.
Make you do the extra work for.
No, no, no. It's, I, I was doing the work regardless. So when, yeah, when it came about, uh, we, even though we knew some of these parcels were not viable, we just figured we might as well know what's, what.
We should. I mean, this should, this is a great inventory that town should have, not just for affordable housing, but for any other use that might come up in the future.
Yeah, because we never know what someone's going to approach with, or just in general, I think it's really cool to have the historical information actually documented. Because a lot of the property files are kind of either all over or not, or none, stuff wasn't actually put into the files, um, in the past. And I'm really adamant about making sure when someone wants to come look at a property file, because we get people all the time. My grandmother used to live here and now in this parcel, can I look at the property file? And I, I love being able to show people that. Um, and so that, that kind of was a big priority too, is we need to know what is on this land. It's really cool to know what, and when it was dedicated and who by. So this is not just for affordable housing. Uh, it really is just to inform the board and the planning commission and the public on, uh, what, you know, how these came about. Um, which I think is really cool. It's been really cool to kind of learn Netherland a little bit more on my end. So I was happy to do the work. Um, I think it's great. Um, another one we have here is 51 Doe Trail. There were the only thing that I was able to find on here. There are some easements for in ingress and egress. Uh, there's the Upper Doe Trail driveway easement agreement. Otherwise there was nothing on there restricting housing. It is a pretty heavily forested area and there's no sewer infrastructure in that area, um, as well. Something to note.
How close are the neighbors?
Um, that's a good question.
Well, if you look at the.
See, I was gonna say, let me look at the map there. I mean, it, it, it doesn't look like the left neighbors are terribly far, but you know, that map is small.
It's how much? How many, three quarters of an acre?
Yeah, looks like based on, uh, Google Maps here, it's maybe about 150 feet away from the nearest house.
Right. Well, it's. Yeah, it's a.
It's, I think, it's Steve. It's one of our outlots.
No, I was just gonna say that. I remember that as being, there were a number of outlots in the Big Spring, except the original plating.
Oh, okay.
I think that was one of them.
Sure. It's on that hairpin.
Yep.
Probably.
At that time considered non-buildable.
Yeah. I'm not sure that anything of. I'm not sure what it would look like there. Yeah.
Would point seven one acres ever support even two duplexes? Then it's, it's not too suitable.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Well, with the zoning, it's one house per acre, one block per acre.
Yeah.
Plus where it's way back there too. So it's not suitable for that type of.
Yeah, and there would be no sewer infrastructure. It would be pretty expensive.
Is it, is this safely a no-go?
Yeah, I believe, I think it's one of the ones we marked off. Um, I wish I had that list in front of me. I should have brought it. But you'll still get that, you'll still get that information. Um, let's see here. Am I missing some?
It just leaves Wildwood.
I know.
Basically.
Oh, there it is. 32 Wildwood Lane. Sorry, I missed that. Um. So there, yeah, there's a, there's, it looks like there was no specific restriction on housing, but there was an agreement between town and mortgage limited standing about the investment fees and water taps. And some plating information. There was also agreement for a permit construction of individual sewage for a specific lot there that I found. There's no infrastructure, sewer infrastructure present. Um, there is water infrastructure present on the property. Something that Andrew and I noted was there would be costs beyond PIF and TAP fees, um, to connect. Um, it is.
Drill a pipe into the water tank next door.
Yeah, exactly. Um, it is heavily forested. Yep, water tank next door, um, located near some residential housing.
I remember that.
It's an interesting lot.
Came under discussion, maybe Roger remembers as well, when we were talking about, um, various emergency egresses for Big Spring. That was one that we looked at because it, we could get, it was relatively flat and, you know, short to get out to, uh, Magnolia. But, uh, so part of that would have been used for the emergency eagles.
Okay.
If, if that was viable, but, but then it goes through, uh, Forest Service land.
Yep.
On the other side.
What's the size on this? I don't see anything on the document.
Let me see here. Sorry. Um.
Point, point, point three one?
Point three, yeah, point three one. Sorry, I had to edit this PDF and it was a really funky setup.
Way up there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, if you look at it on the map, it's a we, really weird lot. And again, um, as we move forward, I can't remember all of them off the top of my head. We will be presenting kind of, okay, these are the ones that don't have restrictions, but as you can see, there's a lot of agreements, covenants, restrictions on many of the town-owned parcels. So more to come.
Okay.
But does anyone have any more questions, have any, um, feedback, would like to see more? Again, when we have that presentation, it'll be a little bit more in depth on you, you know, if it is, if it even makes sense. And what would the infrastructure, what would cost, not cost specifically look like, but whether would we need to expand or anything along that lines? But still have a little bit of work to be done there. We have a lot of projects going on.
Okay, I think I've got most of the ones that were no-go listed that way, but on Zero Indian Peaks Drive, what did we decide on that one? The very first one.
I think questions need to be answered about the Mud Lake agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, correct.
So is, is this map that's at the, passed all of the information in the packet that shows like, you know, the entire town and it has four areas circled down? Is this the pared down properties that, that you, uh, you know, it looks like this?
So that was what Miranda and I, Miranda had originally made that map. Um, and that is kind of, those were the original parcels that we were, when the developers, we had two different ones come to us. We were like, these are the most viable options.
I got you.
Which kind of started it. Those are really, from a standpoint, if we hadn't looked at these title searches, these were ones that people, the developers felt they could do something with, um, or that were, um, viable at that time. As determined by Miranda. So I will not take credit for that.
Well, I would say that this map is extremely helpful with the, you know, the other little pieces and then having to go to Google Maps and figure out where it is in town. Having this one, and I, my, if you want some feedback on, uh, what would be a little more readable and easier to see, something like this that showed everything that, that you're presenting, and maybe you could actually throw the other ones on there, but gray them out or something and say, you know, these are the ones that were determined to not be plausible, but.
So anything you see in blue is town. That's town-owned land.
Okay.
Yeah. But yes, I agree with you. Um, I.
If you go back to present that to the BOT, you know, a, and as you can, you know, it clearly, you know, number three there, uh, the Zero Big Springs Drive was previously identified. You know, I, I had issues with what the deal the developers were wanting to, to do, that would have got into, you know, some other stuff. But, but, you know, again, I, I think that it, you know, it would be worthwhile when you go back to the BOT to have investigated, you know, number three in particular, a little more and find out what the, uh, you know, the, the barriers would be, you know, to that possibly being utilized in the future, you know, whether it's in five years or whenever it ends up being, uh, possible to, to do something like that.
And of course, the other option too, is it doesn't, it, it could be both perhaps a park and some affordable, one piece of it. It's not like you're taking away the entire park.
Well, I agree. And if you walk along that, you know, there's, it, it continues on there. There's quite a bit of, of land in there where you could tie in closer towards rodeo court and still leave, you know, some significant trails and availability and open space over there, you know, but you know, it all depends on, you know, what, as you get a little farther in with the legal searches on that, if that's, uh, you know, that's a hard no, I saw on, earlier on, you said it, it was listed as it could only be a single family home, but that might be one of the ones like Steve had mentioned. Could we go back to the, the people, you know, how we ended up acquiring that property and seeing if, if that's something that could be changed or modified?
Yeah.
And they might be willing based upon, you know, things have changed since that.
Well, and, um, that's something we were gonna use when, as we got to this, uh, for Attorney Madison is looking into those agreements. Do they, are some of them like, is there a end date? Is there not? And not, not that that's what we're looking at. Obviously, we don't want to just get away, rid of parks. I don't, some of these agreements just need that legal aspect that I, I will say I don't have that experience. Um, and so would love to have her look over and just really dig into those. It was really helpful with Tilden Park. She dug, dug into it and was like, you'd have to approach the property owner and you would not want to ask the board for that. You would want the board to bring that up and ask you, give you that direction.
Okay, so what, what's the next step at this point? I mean, it, um, obviously some of these have been eliminated.
So next.
That new list then goes to the Board of Trustees next?
Yep. So, um, Andrew and John and I met and just from an infrastructure, we're like, nope, yep, what's the tank on? That kind of thing. Um, and then these park ones, um, you know, marked them off. We had a couple that were like, maybes, do these need to be brought up? Or we, let's have Attorney Madison look into these. Um, and so John and I will finalize that and then I would say probably have it. I think we're doing it at an October, probably beginning of October because the Board of Trustees meetings are packed for September. Um, so it'll probably come back, I would think in October. And then happy to again, bring that to the October meeting. So you guys can see kind of what, what came from that.
So do you think the Board of Trustees will come back to us and say?
Don't go ahead, Finny.
No, to, to say, well, what, what do you guys recommend or what do you think as far as affordable housing or something like that, or?
I'm not, honestly, I'm not really sure. I didn't really get either one way. I think they just wanted clear, like, okay, if I'm having, right now I'm the one having these conversations with developers. Or at least the developers that have approached us. I'm not like actively reaching out and looking for people. But, um, me being able to continue any conversations. And so I think they're really just wanting to know what parcels.
Okay.
Can't we do? Yeah.
So they're not looking for something from us.
But last month, while we're getting this, is last month I asked her if she could bring this.
Yeah.
And presented to us in addition.
But this is, this is so much planning commission agenda. I, I mean, I feel very strongly that we've just raised some questions. We have not even come close to answers on the viable project, product. So this is a discussion. So we need to have it as a planning commission agenda item so we can truly make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
I, I, I think that's a good.
Absolutely. I, I'm adamant with that.
That's what I was sort of trying to get to.
Well, we can't say and go to the Board of Trustees. No, we want to be able to give them specifics.
Yeah. So originally, since they were the one who directed us to do this, I think that's kind of why it went that way. But I think that's a great, you know, when I can talk to John tomorrow, I think that's a great thing to bring back. Maybe it comes before the planning commission. We kind of give some, you might have recommendations. I don't think you should build on any town parcel. You know, that might be something that is recommended and I, I don't see why that wouldn't be a bad idea to then present them these options. And also say, and the planning commission had this to say about these parcels that are viable. So I think that's a discussion John and I can have, and I think that's a, a great, yeah, great piece of advice.
Right. And also because, well, earlier on, we said that, uh, well, it was Mike, that we want to have this discussed so that the public can hear about it. So if we're, if we're just passing it on to them, then it gets to, you know, what are you gonna do? And it gets done. So this way there's at least a clear agenda step for people even discuss this. I mean, and, you know, it's a month, so it's not, not like.
I was confused in asking what the next steps are.
Yeah.
I clearly feel like there's a lot more input on, you know, some of the products and let's, let's be able to actually have Brett say, yeah, definitely this is, and with Attorney Mattson to say, yes, you have one or two options as a, as opposed to hypothetical whatevs.
Yeah, and that could be that there are one or two options left and no affordable developers are interested in that. And then, you know, maybe it becomes creative planning where we've had community members that are interested in possibly putting affordable units on property they have. And so maybe that's where our next steps are. But I can't, I can't continue to have conversations with anyone interested in how this looks right now. So.
Well, thanks for pushing it, Jim. This is, this has been a good effort.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna bring that feedback back to John and then I will, uh, have a conversation so you guys know kind of what that's gonna look like. I think that's a great piece of advice. I, I do see the value in having, you know, looking at whatever parcels are there and saying, I don't think this makes sense. Or I think this one makes the most sense if someone were to approach. Because that's the thing. It doesn't mean affordable housing is going on these properties. It just means I can have the conversation if someone's interested. And then that's where the public.
But from a planning purposes, like Roger's saying, it makes sense to let them know what we think.
Yeah.
This is what this could be used for, then work that someone else has to work out all the details.
Yeah, and you might say it might be better for another school or a bit, you know, there might be, you might, yeah, I, I totally see the value in that and I think that's a great point.
Yeah, like I was saying earlier, what, you know, it could still be part park or part, I mean, we can still come up with some recommendations.
Yeah.
That's always gonna happen.
Yeah, and I think that's helpful too, when I'm having conversations with developers on what do you guys want to see? And maybe someone comes and I say, well, this is what the board and the planning commission was thinking this would look like. And that could help when we come for presentations if people are interested. So I think that's a great idea. I really do.
I, I just wanted Steve, you to know that we weren't directed by the BOT to do any, we don't have any tasks. It was just something that asserted us into.
Was written, yeah, but I wanted you guys to have the same information and get the same. And I really wanted the public to know as well that we're not coming to take land. Um, there was a lot of confusion. I'm not sure how it got started. I mean, I am sure, but but, yeah, but I've, I've done a lot of, I've answered a lot of questions. I've made a lot of calls. Um, you know, I do want them to know. I want the public to know. We're not here to start ripping up these parts and taking away, you know, their outdoor recreation to throw some houses on it. That's not the case. I just, I don't want to have conversations that the board, the planning commission, the public don't want me to have.
Going back to what Roger was saying though, I feel pretty strongly, this is right down the fairway for the planning commission. It's, this is where it should start. Um, and this is where recommendations should come from. I don't think, um, the Board of Trustees without PC input is gonna make the best decision. Because I know what those dockets look like and I know how much tension it, it'll get.
Yeah, no, come back to the planning commission, even if the Board of Trustees decides they want us to look at something and tell us to do that, but it needs to come back one way or the other.
Okay.
So Elizabeth or Mike, do you have any other further comments? You've been quiet.
I'm in agreement that it's a worthwhile conversation to be having and I'm really appreciative of this list being compiled. I think it's a great inventory, as was said. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well spoken, Elizabeth. It's, it's a great conversation. And this is right up the planning commission's alley. It's exactly what we're talking about. I do have one additional thought. It's a little bit of a tangent, but this seems like an appropriate context to share it in. And so I was thinking of like in the, the Wingate property and some other parks that have been donated to town in the past. The thought occurred to me that it would, might be easier to manage for town if we created a separate zone, like a public open space slash park category as a, an actual zone. I haven't gone much past the, the concept of that, but it might be useful in categorizing these, these parcels that have been earmarked for parks and don't allow development. Just an idea.
Right, but, but again, we don't, we're gonna be careful not to paint ourselves into a corner too. If, if we can, even if it's designated a park and at the time, but now the need for affordable housing.
Right.
Is up as, uh, you know, a much better use of that property. We don't want to, you know, uh, restrict ourselves from being able to recommend or to do something like that. I don't know how else feels, but.
Yeah.
I agree. Uh, Mike, you're right though. I was certainly gonna bring, not necessarily bring that up, but I was not gonna let this pass because, uh, you know, this all basically is kind of happened just because of what we did a year ago. So that's kind of why we're here. The idea that, uh, if we'd had this conversation a couple of years ago, or the public, we didn't even have these places listed as public. They were part of that thing. So, uh, the ones that we determine that are inappropriate, there certainly can be a classification or, you know, to mark them that way so that in 10 years from now, the next generation is trying to have this conversation, they will at least have some historical things go, oh no, we had this discussion, you know? So just the idea of clarifying Mud Lake and what that agreement says and how that works. You know, and certainly there's gonna be, you know, people that are gonna discuss that in the next couple of months. So we, we need to actually clarify that and have that part of the record.
No, I was not saying it.
I, I agree with you that, so that this would make it, this whole process will be very helpful and needs to be documented. And, and the idea of categorizing, uh, different public things, which was, this is appropriate for school. This was definitely designated, as I said, open space. That, you know, that needs to be kind of recorded so that future people know.
Right, okay.
And parks and, you know, really parks and open space are really two different things.
And it will save the future planner a lot of work 10 years from now because they won't redo.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that was a big part of my goal here is, I think that's how the property files ended up in the first place. The way they are is there's turnover, everyone does the job differently and, um, I don't want this to continue to be a repeat. I mean, I'm gonna be here. My plan is to be here for a while, so. But yes, you know, eventually I'm sure someone will replace me and I don't want this to be a continuous conversation that we're relying on you guys for the historical information. It also needs to be documented. So the goal is really to get these, yeah, property files. I know. We all have, we don't know how, when Roger will be here in 20 plus years. So.
20 years left, but.
Yes.
But no, seriously, um, would like to the board of trustees from this meeting to understand that this is a planning issue and we need to have input on, you know, um, these parcels or whatever the use of these parcels are.
And I think how I'm going to do that, so we'll go into this more with our staff reports, but something John's had us start doing in our staff reports for items like that, that maybe don't need to be a whole agenda item, but staff would like direction is we've started writing in our reports and then bringing it up at the beginning of the meeting with the consent, um, direction from staffs or from board trustees. And so I think this would be a good opportunity for me and my staff report to say, hey, this is some feedback we got from the last meeting. I'm looking for the direction. Can this be presented to the planning commission to give some recommendation on what is viable to then come back to the board of trustees? Um, at their next, uh, meeting on the 7th.
Cause if this isn't planning, nothing is.
Yes, yes, and so I think that's a good point. And again, that's a direction we're taking, and so I'll do that on my next staff report.
All right, well, thank you very much, and again, appreciate the hard work that went into this.
Before we move on from that, the only other recommendation I would be is, uh, the B O T members that went with, on the egress train walk with me certainly understand how, uh, enlightening it is to actually see the ground. So if they were going to look at any of these in person, I would recommend that they go over and park on Lakeview Drive and, and walk over and walk some of that ground there at Zero Big Springs Drive of that property. And, and to see why, you know, I, I firmly believe that that's probably the most viable one, you know, at some point in the future. If the, uh, you know, the covenants and everything, you know, can be amended to be able to use that. But if there was going to be one of these that, that I would think, you know, that would be helpful for them to actually see the ground, that would be the one.
Yeah. Absolutely, perfect, well, that was great. This gives me a lot of, uh, feedback and again, direction to put my staff, staff report to then probably come back to you next meeting. It'll be a smaller meeting as well.
All right, perfect, thank you. So let's move on then to the town staff report.
Okay, so, um, again, as I kind of mentioned there, so we started requesting direction from the board of trustees on some of these smaller items that don't need to be a whole agenda item. So like you'll see in John's, he asked for direction to buy a new laptop. He is not fond of laptop books. Uh, and then he kind of wrote his letter in there. Rita's, um, so something that's going to start happening is we're already having our budget talks as town staff, that is moving forward. I think there's going to kind of be just like a rough, not necessarily we're bringing budget to the board of trustees, but maybe talking a little bit more about it. There's going to be a meeting in October that Rita and John will kind of just be, um, really starting that up. We're already really having some of these hard conversations. Um, all of us as staff are really working on our budgets, where it makes sense to cut, where it doesn't make sense to cut. It's going to be a tight budget this year, as, as it was last year. But we are already actively on it and I, I think we have a good team going into that. Let's see here, there were, there was something I wanted to highlight here.
Certainly our budget isn't so tight that we can't buy the town administrator a new laptop, is it? Does he really have to go to the B O T to ask permission for 50?
Cause we don't, uh, we really never have budgeting for laptops. I personally went through probably five 10-year-old laptops this year because they all just started dying, batteries exploding, so. Um, and finally, thankfully.
There's no equipment in the budget for town staff?
Not very large, not to cover.
It's pathetically small.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Yeah, so it's every couple of years, budget enough to maybe get a laptop. But most of, I will say, I used a utilities laptops that was 12 years old and then my laptop was personally 10 years old. Miranda's, you couldn't even, if it wasn't plugged in, it wasn't working. So John got one of the police department ones, but they have such low memory. So he either was, can I purchase more memory or can I just get a better laptop?
10 feet of asphalt would pay for all the, all of the new computers.
The lifetime of a computer is no more than five years.
I know.
I mean, because you can't even upgrade some of these computers at, at some point.
Yeah.
So.
Which is happening now, yeah. Ours are good.
Five years is replacement time.
Yeah, so most of our, a lot of our laptops are definitely closer to the 10, right?
This is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry for the.
Let's see here, um. Something I wanted to highlight, just because I've gotten this complaint a few times, it's in Boulder County Sheriff's. There's a couple of abandoned R Vs and then there's an RV in town in the CBD district. Jake and I are actively working on that, that's something that's going to start moving forward this week. Something I, I'd like to highlight, um, that I've been changing in a code enforcement side is we are treating everyone equally. We are writing violations, but we do really try to work with our public on this. Right now, we're getting, you know, we're in weed season and so there's a lot of elderly people that need help. And so I'm personally kind of going out of my way on some of these pretty junky yards to try to find people to help volunteer and help some of these people. Um, and so I do encourage people, you know, if you're getting these violations, it's something I try to tell everyone that I chat with. We understand if extensions are needed, they need to be reasonable, but I do understand that there's an, there's an aging in place population and some of these people are the violations that we're seeing right now. Um, and I'm, so I'm trying to find a new way of how can we help them, but still keep everyone in compliance. Cause it's not fair to write a violation for someone who can do it, but write a violation for someone who cannot. So you might be hearing from me soon if you are volunteers, but the RV is being worked on.
I'll volunteer.
Yes.
That was, uh, the one that's in the central business, it's like, somebody had to tow it in there and put it on somebody else's property. And you can't then take the wheels off and say, oh, I'm sorry, I can't move it anymore, there's no wheels on it. That's absurd and that's not an old person.
No, that is not, that is not, um, that one we're working on, it's a little more complicated, but you can always reach out to me if you have concerns. Um, I work directly over Jake, um, and we, yes, it is being worked on, it is something I've gotten a complaint on, and so I just wanted to address it.
I will keep snapping, I'll keep snapping pictures and sending them to you.
Yes.
And our volunteerism, before you move on, you know, our church, the Presbyterian church does a lot of volunteer work in town, uh, for people. So if somebody's about to get hit with a big fine and you know that they're a worthy person that just doesn't have the means to hire it done or to, uh, get out and do it themselves, please let me know.
Yeah, I was going to say, you'll be hearing from me soon.
I will tell you then another thing, there's so much volunteer, uh, spirit in this town. Maybe this is something that you and John could talk about, uh, having Peter, our public engagement manager, put out a little call for help. I watch how many people jump in on the town weed poll, you know, if this kind of stuff made it onto, you know, Nedheads or the town website, you know, that got put on Facebook. I think you'd get, you know, say, hey, at this time, date and time, the biggest effort for me is, is just basically coordinating, you know, get, to get people together at a certain time and place, you know, and, and so that's the main thing. There's usually more than enough people that are willing to help, uh, but there, there's got to be a way.
Yeah.
To, to utilize our Facebook.
Working with some owners and really finding days they're available, so they feel comfortable, we have people there. Um, it's a goal of mine to make the community feel like more of a community, and I think sometimes that's been missed in the past. Maybe with how it was previously handled, we do want these code enforcement issues to be settled, I do actively work on them, there's a lot of, you know, um, some of them have, have to be handled a little bit differently. I do try to handle case by case, but fair and still reasonable.
I know that there's definitely people that would be willing to help if, if, you know, the word came from you that, hey, this is a situation where, where the property owner does not have the means to, to hire somebody to do this, you know, or the physical ability to do it. You know, I certainly, you know, if there's something immediate, you know, let me know and we can work on it before the snow flies. But, uh, I, I think that just getting the word out through, I, I hate to say this, but I feel like our public engagement has not been utilized as good as it could be. You know, there's, there's several areas, you know, this, this is a perfect example of, if you could get the word out, you know, through, through Facebook, you know, there, there's a lot of people and I, I watched, I saw the picture of how many people came together for the town weed poll, you know? And if you said, hey, there's a 70-year-old, you know, woman over here that, that can't get her slash removed from her property and it's a fire hazard, you know? And she's about to get a, you know, $300 ticket, you know, I, I feel confident that people would, would show up for that kind of stuff.
So do I.
You know, I don't want to beat this to death, but you know, there's a way, coordination is, is the key and get, get the information out there. And for coordination, uh, I, I think it would be, on the other flip side is, I've had our church contacted and I've showed up at a house that's a, you know, $2 million place. And I'm like, okay, you're not the intended audience for our, for our church.
I'm, I'm assessing these, making sure owners are comfortable, that I'm asking if they would like help going to the sites myself. And so I do actively go to a lot of the enforcement we are trying to do, I go to a lot of the properties myself as well to get eyes on them. So there's two sets of eyes. But yeah, just something I personally just highlighted that I'm trying to help during the season. And then just wanted you guys to know, like, please, always feel free to reach out to me if you have code enforcement stuff, it is being enforced and trying to enforce, uh, but I.
Engagement is a good point that Jim brought up because, and that was one of the things, or, you know, Peter got a lot of heat over the public engagement being geared more for tourists rather than the people who live here. And, and I think even Nicole had mentioned that as one of her complaints about, uh, you know, his plan or whatever, so.
I, I promise you, if you put out, if there was a post that showed up on Nedheads from the town that said, in two weeks, call to action, this property this time, we need, you know, a minimum of six individuals to come here and, and help, you know, uh, man, I, I don't.
Somehow they do.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One other resource, Brett, uh, not to forget, um, Food Pantry, uh, is taking care of the funds from the O T F, the part that came from the tax we put in the last round. We're trying to, we know that the, uh, starting in October, we're going to get a lot more requests, so I'm trying to save our money up. But let's talk if you need financial resources for something special too.
Yes.
Cause I, I run that bank account.
Awesome, that's great to hear, um, great to hear, yeah.
And the churches play a big role here, as Jim says, I know that.
Yeah, Jim.
Thank Rita contributes a lot of money to the food pantry as well.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, well, you know all that, but, but no, I mean, it's just an example of, you know, town volunteerism and generosity.
Yeah, I, I think that's great and, um, yeah, you'll, you will see stuff moving, but I wanted to let you know, R Vs will be moving, okay? I'm working on it. Yes, before this, no, no, no option.
Yeah, I heard Mike Dye's got a good back, he could lift it.
Maybe tomorrow.
Um, so. So something noted, Josh noted in his, were primary roads, the main roads, Big Springs neighborhood, including Big Springs Drive, Valley View, Peak View, Alpine, Pine Cliff, Doe Trail and Barker Road, um, were graded this month and addressed due to wear and tear. Something I wanted to mention that's been coming up is some culvert work, we, you know, they've been blowing them out, having to blow them out regularly. Still actively working on that.
But some of those roads are starting to deteriorate again, both from the rain and just the use, particularly Big Spring, I mean, it's the only way in and out of Big Springs, so it gets a lot of abuse, so they may want to relook at some of those, right?
Yep, yep, I think they're actively doing it, they are, they are actively preparing for the plow season. As we had mentioned, uh, last year, um, there will be trackers on the plows this year, which will be really cool. We're going to get some educational pieces out, um, for, really get some public engagement into plowing this year, since we got a lot of heat at town hall last year. Uh, it's pretty rough, um, and so we're really going to get some of that educational pieces on what it looks like, really inform people about these trackers so that people understand their roles, the town's roles, and what that's going to look like this winter. You know, I think we had some brutal storms last year and so that kind of hurt the streets team. So Josh is really looking at how can we better educate the public this year compared to la, you know, previous years.
I don't want to miss the opportunity to give kudos to public, to the streets crew, because I live on Barker and it looks great. They did a great job, you know, I think it's just they're just getting to the, these streets as they can.
Yes.
But I'm very happy with the work that they did on my road.
But not with trackers, we can, we can get up at four in the morning and see where they are.
Exactly, if you can't sleep. And again, there's still going to be some additional, um, grading into early fall to really start preparing for this winter. So I, I guarantee you're going to see some more pastors through there. Let's see here. Something that came up the last board meeting, uh, it will be coming up at this board meeting too, from a utilities point, I haven't read through their whole thing. But there is this lead pipes, um, I will probably kind of butcher it, but I can give you a slim summary because I was there. We are required by, I believe it's like new laws, uh, for the state, there has to be, we have to be able to say there's no lead pipes, and so there's, we don't have all the documents, as we're finding on a lot of stuff for some of these properties. And so there would need to be drilling done, I think it's like a certain percentage of housings that's not known. Um, and so Andrew's looking to move forward and do some of that work with town and a contractor as well. Which I believe it sounds like the board was interested in possibly pulling from the reserves to get that done. Otherwise, it's sending out a mass letter to everyone, letting them know you could possibly have lead pipes, we don't know. And it would be, uh, waiting to next year to try to get funding to do this. He doesn't want to send out that letter and create this chaos, he would really like to move forward with it. And so that's going to come as an action item at the next board meeting. Happy to send you guys the actual present, like the informational on that, uh, because obviously I'm kind of butchering it a little bit. There's definitely more details in there, but that's also going to be an action item at that next board meeting, because utilities would like to move forward.
Yeah, I think I was in there too, I think he was going to try and pull 80 grand from something else.
Yes.
Into this project, and he was really reaching into the cupboard to get it done, but I agree with his judgment that you could create ca, chaos when there, there's no good reason.
Yeah, um, and another option that he had mentioned is if that letter were to go out and somebody were to reach out to them, they could personally come and test your water for lead. But he really would like to move forward with actually completing this this year, getting this regulation done that needs to be done. And letting our, you know, having our public feel safe about their pipes.
Do we, do we know if it's a date thing, in other words, from this point on, there's lead pipes were not put in, do we even know that?
Yes, um, I can't remember the same, the exact date.
Houses that are older.
Mm-hmm, I can't remember the exact date, but I helped on some of the research for this and I was basically looking for any new service lines that, because it's really service lines we're looking at. Any new ones that were done past a certain year, I cannot remember the year right now.
1960.
Yeah, there we go, yep. But there's just a lot of very poor documentation, as you were finding out with lots of stuff and we are document people here.
Is there a no later than date that that has to be done by?
October 17th.
Of this year?
Yes.
That we're supposed to have all the lead pipes taken care of?
Uh, it's like a certain percentage, you have to drill it and scrape the top and the contractor they were talking to is very confident they can do that.
They need a sample size, um, that's pretty, pretty doable.
Yes.
Cause we're, we're, we're not talking, so we're talking the mains, not all the individual service.
Service lines, we're talking service lines.
Every individual.
So they need to do a certain percentage of service lines, yep. But that's, I mean, we have a lot that we have identified do not have lead pipes based on documents we have, but out of the ones we don't, we have to pull a percentage from that. You have to drill down into it, scratch the top.
I understand, but.
Yep.
How's that even a town's responsibility?
It's a, it's a new state, unfortunately Colorado.
Evidently, if it, if it freezes, it's not your.
I know. Yeah, um, and then.
And I'm not arguing, yeah, I just wondered, I just assumed that we just say from the Buffalo box, your house is your, it's up to you to know.
Not anymore, it's state, um, states requiring. Something I was identify, or, uh, in mind, um, we have this housing coordinator grant. The town is still working on lines with, um, finalizing benefits, pay, job description, we just, uh, finalizing stuff with DOLA. Um, and so we, I'd say within the next couple of weeks, not even, we should have that finalized and start posting, be posting this out there for the housing coordinator. Um, it just took a little bit more time to finalize and now we've got this budget thing going on and so, uh, trying to figure all that out. Comprehens and plan, as you guys know, um, they're going to start sending out, we've sent out one chapter, I think it was, and some vision statements, um, they're going to start. one chapter, I think it was, and some vision statements. Um, they're going to start sending more out. They just really wanted to start. They really heard you, wanted to start getting something out there. Um, you'll see a couple more compiled chapters coming out here. So far they haven't gotten any feedback. Um, so feel free to give feedback. It can also be in the email to me, but that document I sent you can comment directly on there. Um, more will come out, but again, they just wanted to get your, get your hands on something. Um, and then the multimodal, um, transportation. I was at the farmer's market last Sunday. Um, I saw Linda. I don't think I saw any of you, but Danielle and I were out there and we were collecting feedback on prioritization of some of these draft recommendations they were giving from the public. So we wanted to see what does the public think is most important. We didn't include that secondary bridge there because we knew everyone would be interested in that. And so we really were focusing on traffic calming, uh, by the intersection by a hardware to Eldora Road. There was a couple other pieces in there. And so we were, we had stickers and we were having people prioritize their top three. And some people felt that their top three was one item. Um, we also got a lot of paper surveys out for people who don't have great internet access or don't really go online. I've already seen, seen some of those trickling in, which was awesome. Um, we had, I think before Danielle even left, we had about 20 more people that submitted surveys while we were at the farmer's market, uh, which was really cool. So they're going to be using this, uh, recommendations from the public to really draft final recommendations. They're going to have one more stakeholder meeting. Um, they will also, John would really like them to do one more public kind of engagement piece. Um, and then we'll start seeing final recommendations by October. So it was really, it was really cool to get out there. I hadn't been to the farmer's market before and really meet some more of the public. I personally loved it. Um, and it was really, we got a lot of great feedback. So that was very fun, very interesting. Yeah. So does anyone have any questions or any feedback from these reports?
Any, um, any update on the broadband at this point? I know you said there was a meeting going on tonight.
So there's a meeting going on tonight. So I think we will have an update for you. And I honestly will probably, I'm, I mean, happy to bring it up to the meeting, but also happy to just email it directly to all the boards. Cause that's a question I'm getting from a lot of boards right now.
Well, we get, I get a lot of questions from people. So it'd be nice to.
Yep. Yeah. John and I will chat in the morning and I, I think it'd be good for me to send out an email and feel free to share with neighbors. And again, we'll use public engagement. I think it's something we need to get on our website.
Right.
But it's still moving forward. There's been a lot of these pieces because we're working with Gilpin where, um, we have cell phone companies or, or internet companies saying, oh no, we service here. And so there's been a lot of fighting with, no, you don't. And here's the numbers.
All right.
Um, so that's been a lot of.
That was all settled.
There's been a couple of those here and there still, but as in regards to the Netherlands piece, we're good. And really they're just waiting on final contracts and to really start coming through here. I mean, they're ready. Their team's ready. So there's just weird quirks here and there we're dealing with. So.
Can I go back just for a second to the Netherlands multimodal plan? I missed, I just totally missed that there was that other meeting or I would have tried to come to that. But I, I did see that we have one coming up on Monday, September 23rd.
Yes, stakeholder meeting. Yep. So that's the one I was just talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that one's coming up.
And what's the goal? What is it? We're, we're, we're trying to do at that, at that meeting?
Um, so really I think they're going to use some of these pieces from public feedback that they have gotten in regards to prioritization. Something they would like to include in the study is what the public also thinks is priorities. And so that's, I mean, we're really going to start, that's how we're going to start pulling from our funding, which ones should we go for first? So I think they're going to present some of that information to you and really kind of present to you final, like this is what we're thinking final wise. This is what it's looking like. Do you have any, any other feedback before we really start moving with putting it out there to the boards?
Okay. So that's, so then at a later time, maybe in October, they would come back and we might see something at the planning commission or will it just go?
Yep. You would see a final draft come here and a final draft go to the board of trustees.
So this is really just for all, when you say stakeholders, public, members of the public, are you talking about business owners or?
Um, so I forget who was all on that list, but I think it was like the sergeant, uh, sustainability coordinator, which we don't have one right now. Myself, uh, there was Eldora. So it was a couple of those initial, and I think you were just one we pulled from the planning commission, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I think, I don't, I don't remember how it came about. Miranda kind of started it and I'm now finishing it. But it was just members from kind of these areas where we're having these recommendations that were pulled or like a large, I think Bron's in one of them. He's a large business owner here. And so it was just members that were pulled that I think Miranda had recommended. I'm sorry. I don't have like a solid answer on that, but.
No problem. I just.
I think we grabbed you or you volunteered.
I think I did. I think I think on that because maybe it probably had, it was back when we were doing the parking subcommittee. There are part of that had some, some trails and wayfinding.
Yep.
So I probably got in there, but is it something that would be appropriate for the rest of the planning commission to be able to get this invite? So if they're available, they could come or is that something, well, we don't want to over pack the meeting and get too many.
So this is something John and I are still talking with them about. I think their original concern was is, um, we'd like to give, and this is the concern from Fear and Pierce. This is not the concern from town staff. We would like to open it to public, have more members. Right now how it's set up, there's not enough members from each, there's not enough member from the boards to publicly notice it. Fear and Pierce is worried that some of these stakeholders will not give their true feedback.
Yeah.
And so I think that, that is their idea. We really think it should be opened more so.
Plus there's probably concern the larger a meeting becomes, the less you accomplish because you.
Yes. So that was some of the original concerns is.
Okay.
It then, yeah, that it then opens that up because I told them, I said, if there's more than this many members here, we have to publicly notice it. This comes about. And so it's not to be done sneakily or anything like that. I think they're just worried that, you know, maybe Eldora will.
Planning commission's representative.
Correct. Yep. That was really the, yep.
So let me ask this, if I for some reason have a conflict, can I try to find another person to sub for me from the planning commission?
Yes, would love that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. You let me know and I will let Carly know and we will get the invite and, yep.
Okay.
That would be great. So they're really, yeah, we really just want to say, hey, this is what your public said. Based on the draft, based on some feedback. Do you guys have any last feedback? We're going for final.
Cause we gave them feedback anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Some of that they didn't like, but.
Yeah. Yep. So, um, yeah, excited to see some of these ending. So then when it, once that's drafted and adopted, we can really start, I mean, obviously we have plenty, plenty of grants right now. But, uh, it will be cool that we can start actually going for funding and have this foundation of the study to back us up. So I'm really, I'm really excited to see that happen.
Okay.
Um, any more?
Anyone else have any?
Yeah.
Questions online, folks? Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
For the, uh, very complete staff report as usual. We'll move on to other business and one thing that I wanted to bring up under other business is, um, the plan to go forward on the comp plan. And maybe we could first start off with, it was, what is the month of September? There's going to be a workshop?
So I really didn't get an alignment of dates from
Okay.
a lot of people to have per se enough. Um, so I don't know if it makes sense at this point. Uh, I don't know if it, you know, yeah, I just didn't get enough. And that's what I told SE group and they said, you know, we'll come to every meeting still if not, and if there's not a workshop, that's fine. I also think you guys need a little bit more, this is personally a little bit more chapters to really have something to dive into before now and then. So that's just my feedback on that. But yeah, I didn't have enough alignment and dates to, I don't know if it's like a quorum, but it'd be like three people would line up and there was never more than like three.
I didn't hear anything. So I was sort of curious where that.
Yeah. I would, uh, my feedback to SE group was I really think there should be more chapters released. If we're going to hold some kind of work session, so then whoever can dive in can dive in and then, and then we can maybe dive into a little bit more in a work session. So maybe I will keep you guys updated on that. Maybe that looks more like, you know, I don't know. I don't know how that looks.
We do this as part of the, the meeting, the planning commission meeting.
That's what, yeah.
Assuming that.
Yep.
We have time.
Mm-hmm.
Or do we do it online and provide feedback either through the document or directly to them?
Yeah.
What, what's the, I guess I'm a little confused on how we.
So originally, yeah, I don't, they're the ones who originally brought up the workshop, not me, not town staff. I really think that they should be able to get enough chapters out in time. They're going to be at the next meeting and we can really discuss feed. One, give feedback online, but they would like based on whoever's feedback to address that at the meeting and then address an additional feedback in the meeting. Um, and maybe give like a summary for those who don't have that time. And then they plan to come to the next, uh, October as well. Um, so I really think based on what I've seen, the information come out so far, because I've reviewed it before, I've sent it to you guys, that this discussion can really be had at the September meeting. The September meeting right now, we only have, um, SE group. We had another item that is supposed to pop up, but I don't think, I don't think the surveys and information is going to be done in time. And that's for the, yeah, lot consolidation. And so I think that might either end up being a special meeting or something along that. Um, I'm still waiting on, I'm still talking to the surveyor. So I still have to talk to team. So I'm not sure when that's coming yet.
So just for you guys, uh, since you weren't here, Steve, last month, they said that their, their calendar or their timeline was that they wanted to present a draft in September and October, have the actual plan, be, uh, pretty well ready, uh, and for feedback in late October and the final plan, uh, presented and done in November, December timeframe with a little bit of, and I think I actually pushed a little bit for an idea about some workshop that we could kind of get together. I kind of was thinking it would be maybe in October.
Yeah.
Uh, with, with the BOT, but as I've gone to a couple of BOT meetings, I realized, man, their agenda is packed all the time. So they may or may not have the desire to get together and have another meeting with us, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see. It was, it was a suggestion that was put out there, uh, to see if that would be beneficial for us to all kind of get on the same page. But, you know, we're getting this in advance now because there's people like Roger that really wanted some, you know, wanted to get into this.
But we got to see how it fits into the bigger picture.
Right.
Correct. Yes.
That's my concern is I'm not sure how we attack this. And I'd like to get comments from the planning commission on their thoughts on how we should proceed because um, it's, right now I'm confused as to how this piece fits here and what are the chapters, the outline? I see a vision statement that has different parts. Are those different chapters?
Yeah. So at the last meeting, something that was discussed is, um, and I should have brought, I should have chatted with you about that actually. They, so they've really done the research. They've gotten the numbers. They have the data collection and so they're really just starting drafts.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, Roger brought up a great point is they're presenting this information, but there's nothing tangible to actually get feedback on. And so he asked, you know, hey, can we see some chapters? So we, people who have time to review them can. And then when we get to the next meeting, there's already feedback or if you guys do get time here and there, you have something to read and just give general feedback at the meeting. Maybe you're not writing in. Um, and so agreed with that. And so they're really focusing on getting you guys these land use chapters and hopefully a good chunk of it, uh, before the next meeting. So we can really have that conversation. And so, um, I don't, I don't know what their original plan was, but Roger brought up a great point. It's really hard.
True.
Yeah, Jim, it's really hard to see what are we looking at if we don't have that information? And so they're really focused on getting the chapters that mean the most to you guys and really getting your feedback on them. I think at the next meeting, we should, I, I even need some clarification maybe about like what, what more is that going to look like in regards to the rest of the comp plan? Uh, there's a little confusion is there as well. And so I think we'll need to ask more clarification at the next meeting. Cause this timeline seems pretty fast for chapters not really going out yet. And they also said that they would. It's such a long plan. And so the, the final draft piece, of course, they're going to have the actual document, but they're going to try to make a like tangible readable version for like me, someone who doesn't have enough hours in the day could just pick it up and be like, okay, this makes sense and not have like a hundred and fifty pages, um, so that the public can really provide some feedback to.
My concern from having been through this process before Roger can, can chime in here as well is that a lot of the, the chapters aren't like silos. They're not all standalone chapters. They all have to integrate and information from one piece fits into the other and so forth. So it's very hard to look at like one chapter. And how does this really fit into the bigger picture? So that was my concern. I don't, Roger, you have any?
Well, only that, yeah, if we have meetings that we don't have a big agenda, let's put it on the docket.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And if we don't have much next month.
I think next month it is probably going to be our only item, um, again. And so I think we could really dig into it.
The one we do tonight.
But yeah, and I'm happy to give them that feedback beforehand. So we can see what that presentation.
They might have answers from to, tonight's discussion. So.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Um, so yeah, that's probably all you're going to see. So we might as well dig into it some more.
So the link you sent out, like on the land use, um, is that a static document or will they just keep adding to it or how does?
Um, so the next portion they are going to send out is going to be much larger. And it'll be an additional link, but I, I think in all in all, it will all kind of combine together is how I was, they were describing it to me. It's basically their team is drafting it and they're just kind of sending it out after they review it. John and I just kind of give it a quick look and then really pass it along to you guys. I'm still figuring out how that looks. So that's just, they said you would be getting more. They just felt Roger was really eager. So I think clarification, I can ask for clarification at my next meeting with them on Monday.
So I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, but so the, the document that we looked at online for land use is, will there be a replacement document for that one or they add to, okay, so.
And so I'll send out another, it'll be the same thing. I'd be sending, sorry. Yeah. I, I see what you're meaning, uh, saying now. I'll be sending out another link with combined information. And so another, uh, an improved document basically with more information. So you can actually see it as a whole.
All right. So we should send in any comments? When, when are they accepting? I guess.
You can send, keep sending them. Yeah.
Continuously.
Yeah, just continuously keep sending them. Um, you know, if you're, you don't really like the way that's formatted and you just want to shoot me an email. That's fine with me. I'm very okay with that. And if you want to hold your comments and write them down till the meeting, that's also very okay.
I have one immediate, uh, comment. I printed it out and, uh, I was trying to figure out, you know, my printer doesn't have colate. And so I'm trying to get, save some paper and do both sides. And I messed it up about three times because there's no page numbers on the document. So if you could just put some page numbers on the bottom, that would be great.
That makes sense.
Okay. Alrighty. Roger, any other comments on it? Anyone online? Nope. Okay. Well, then we'll see if we can do a good dedication to this next month.
Yes, I think so. I'll have some.
Time, everyone send out, you know, please send out some, uh, any updated ever.
Sorry. I have one other item for, uh, other business if it's an appropriate time.
Okay.
I just wanted to follow up on that, um, last week, uh, last month, I had mentioned that, um, we had a letter requesting attention toward the Glasby House Preservation. And I just wanted to follow up to say that we did in fact meet there with, um, Jesse Ansari and Kay, both from the Historic Preservation Society, along with, um, Jennifer from Positive Energy LLC to just give us a little bit of an assessment on the electric, condition of the electric. And Mike Dye and myself. Um, and then since that meeting, we did compile a document, which just sort of outlined like first tier priorities, second tier priorities, as well as potential funding sources to help maybe with some of the repairs. And I just wanted to share that and say I have a document that I could share my screen if people want to see it. Um, otherwise I think the plan was going to be that I kind of give this compiled document that lists the priorities and the assessment from the team that, that met there and send that with Jesse to the next step, maybe to be, they're pitching that to the BOT. Maybe to be they're pitching that to the BOT or having a presentation by the Historic Preservation Society to address some of the things that we might be able to do sooner than later.
Would you mind sharing that with me as well?
Sure.
And I did want to let everyone know, Linda told me at the farmer's market that I guess some money has already been raised. Um, I want to say it was like $400 or something, which again is, I'm sure a lot compared to what needs to be done, but it was exciting to hear. So. But yes, I would say if, I, I don't know with the planning commission, if they want you to share your screen. If not, I would love to get this and share it via email to everyone. Um, if, if not, I would love to see this as town staff.
Thank, thanks for doing that, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Great. I will send that then via email and you can share it as, as desired.
Perfect. Okay, anything else? All right.
So we break last week's record. We're out before nine eleven. We're second.
Thanks, everybody.
All in favor?
All in.
Okay, thank you guys so much. Thank you both on the phone. Have a good night. Hope your back, your back feels better, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Better already. Meetings helped it.
Okay.
Welcome back, Tom.
Bye, guys.
Bye.